... meeting? Would you like to?
I would, thank you.
Okay, alright. Can we start with a prayer? Do you mind?
Councilman Box, would you lead us?
Okay.
Father God, I want to first thank you for this day, Lord. I thank you for the opportunities of it. Thank you for the challenges of it, Lord. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to live the things out that I declare as things that I'll do. Thank you for giving me the strength to do that, Lord. Thank you for helping me be an ambassador of peace. When I'm attacked, I won't revile. If I'm spoken against, I'll only speak positive words back, or I'll speak the truth back in love. Lord, we beseech you tonight here to help us do this with each other. Even when we disagree, Lord, help us to realize that our higher calling in you is more important than handling the issues or handling them inappropriately. So, once again, I thank you for your wisdom tonight and thank you for this opportunity. In Jesus' name, I declare and pray this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Box.
Councilor Quaylar, if you don't mind, I received a phone call from a citizen. I know we don't have much time, so could I call citizens to the mic just after you kind of declared what we're here for? Because that was put on the agenda. I know we got the notice, but there were the reasons as far as this meeting was called. So, I'll let you go ahead.
Right. What I'd like to do, first of all, is we know that this meeting has been called by both you and Councilman London, and we're here to discuss the request to consider looking at the job duties as well as the pay of our current water superintendent, Mayor Stewart. And so, what I'd like us to first of all do before we take on any comments by our citizens is that we cover the bases first. And one of the first questions that we have asked as a council is, first of all, is it legal for us to do this? And so, we received feedback from our city attorney, who the first time when she was asked this question, only looked at the amounts that water superintendent, water and sewage superintendents were receiving. And I received a copy of this a couple of days ago. I also checked with our Alabama League of Municipalities, their legal team, to ask whether, first of all, is it legal for us to increase the pay of a superintendent who is a mayor? Because I'm aware that there are superintendents that are not mayors but serve two roles. They serve as a supervisor of the department, and they also serve as a superintendent. So, there's a distinction that needs to be made here, and that is the distinction that the Alabama League of Municipalities did in answering that question. So, has this, with this in mind, I also asked for the various, are there any AG opinions that are out there? And do we have anything in Alabama code that also addresses this issue? There is an AG opinion. Actually, it was in March of 2020 that Steve Marshall, I believe, is the AG. Yes. He gave an opinion. And then, there is Act Number 258, which addresses this issue also. So, they provided me with these opinions, and when I looked at them, there was a qualification there. It had, in quotes, "a full-time mayor." Okay? So, had to take that into account. So, these are the things that we're going to be considering, whether we need, I think we need, because they recommended getting an AG opinion on this issue, since our superintendent is part-time, and what, just for surety, but also discussing this among ourselves and getting feedback from our audience. So, with this in mind, Councilmember, excuse me, Wilson, I will honor your request to have these citizens speak first, but I wanted to give you this information before you can go on to make your comments. So, this way, you know that we have been looking at this very issue seriously. So, anyone that would like to make their comments, you're free to come forward.
Councilwoman Quaylar, before we get started? Yes, yes, before you get started. I just want to be clear as far as why this meeting was called. This meeting was called, just to be clear, this meeting was called to discuss the water department projects, the projects that was going on in the city, okay? And number two, it was two, two things that was on that notice, and the water superintendent's salary. So, basically, that's why the meeting was started. Council Quaylar, I do understand that you did mention one, but I think you got the other one kind of sort of incorrect, I think, because I wanted everyone to know, the citizens to know about the projects that we have going on in the City of Irondale.
Alright. Thank you for that. I didn't see that in the notice, Councilman Wilson.
It was, it was very much noticed. I did mention it to Mr. Pennington. And I'm sorry for interrupting, but Ms. Danielson, you can go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that the record was all so, all so, you know, clear that whenever Councilman, Councilman Box and I, and I talked about this, the very first thing that we talked about was whether or not the salary of the water superintendent could be raised, you know? That was the first thing that we ever looked at. So, I just wanted to make sure that the record was all so straight on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Quaylar. Ms. Jones, you may come to the, come to the mic? Nope? Okay. Council Quaylar, go ahead.
Okay. So, are there any other residents that would like to come forward? Councilman Wilson called on one. Is there anyone that would like to make their comments? Yes, please come forward. And please give your name.
Ross Graham. I'm just asking, you know, we, we hadn't heard any detail, but nothing to comment on until we know what the decision is. We've heard, you know, the projects that's going on and the salaries, but we hadn't heard any, anything even forming a opinion on it. I think we need to hear what's going on before we can form an opinion.
Thank you. That, that was the approach I wanted to take. Are you okay with that, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, yes, for sure. That's, that's why I turned it over to you.
Okay.
Because I wanted to make it clear of what we were here for. But I turned it over to you in due respect, because you are the chair's person.
Okay. So, which one of our members would like to explain why we are here? Councilman Wilson, you mentioned ongoing projects that are going on. Would you like to expand on that?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to expand as far as getting an update on all of our water projects, and I do believe that we have, Jared, Jared is here, just to give us an update. I do have some information, but Mr. Morris, if you don't mind, you know, I can kind of mention some of the things that's been going on, because we do need to get caught up with what's happening in our water department, or you can kind of just, you know, give us a Cliff Notes version, and I'll kind of add to it, if you don't mind. Thank you so much.
So, we...
I'm not putting you on the spot now. I, I do have a list as far as what we, what we got going on.
So, Mayor Stewart and I, and our municipal consultants, the engineer of the water, you know, we come up with a capital improvement plan that was presented to you all.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I don't know if you need to get closer, though.
Is, is it on?
Is it on, Jared?
That probably helps. That helps.
Yeah, that helps.
So, going back to what I said, so Mayor Stewart, myself, and our city engineer and municipal consultants that does the water, we all put together, threw our heads together, and come up with a capital improvement plan, just based on redundancy as the city continues to grow. That was about 6.2 million, I think that, what that come up to, and we're, so we're in plenary stages of that. Some of the projects that have been completed in the last six, eight months is, is the well two renovation. That was a full building restoration as well as electrical. We replaced the line at Fifth Terrace. We upgraded that line from a two-inch that was dilapidated, leaked every few, few weeks. We also are looking into a meter replacement plan. We're working with the county right now on the roundabout to get it finalized. So, there's a lot of stuff going on right now, and so, it's taken a lot of people, a lot of heads and a lot of, a lot of eyes looking at some different things in different ways to be able to make sure we are able to cross every C and dot every I. So, that's just a few of them. I could probably go on and on, but I don't know how much in detail you want me to go.
Well, I, I, I just have some information here, and, you know, kind of stop me if, if I'm going the wrong way, but just to give everyone an update, you know, we got well two. You did mention that as far as what's going on with that. Well, number seven, which is located at the water department, that's pumping like 200,000 gallons per minute or something like that.
2,000 gallons.
2,000? Okay. Yeah. I do know that you have met with Mayor Stewart. I know you guys, everything that goes on within your department. I know that everything that goes on in your department, I know you do meet with the mayor before any decisions are made, or just to keep him informed, I'm, I'm pretty sure, because that's part of his duties. Just some of the projects, we got a new maintenance building going up. Could you kind of fill me in as far as where is that located? I probably should know, but can you fill me in real quick?
So, that's a part of the capital improvement plan. So, what we're trying to do there is just come up with a plan, come up with a building that kind of accommodates what the guys over there want, and so, what we're trying to do is just get everybody involved in it, because we know that this is our one shot to, to be able to get a new structure over there. So, it will be at the same facility that it is now. We're kind of, the way we look at it, we're, we're committed to that site because of the wells that are there and our, and our treatment facilities there. So, if we did move, we would still have to maintain that site, so we are pretty much committed to that site over there, so we're going to stay there.
You, you kind of touched on this. Thank you so much. You kind of touched on it, I think, a while back about the meter replacement plan that we have going on. Is Mayor Stewart involved in that as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Could you just briefly tell us about the meter replacement? I want to know about that, too.
So, what we're trying to do is, or what we've done, we've kind of done some meter audits, tested some meters, and they're reading eighty-five, eighty-five to ninety percent accuracy, which is, is not good. AWWA standards, anything between ninety-seven, I think point six, and one hundred and one percent is, is basically where a meter needs to be. So, there's a lot of revenue that's being lost as, as well as water not being billed properly. So, that is water loss that we think that's leaking, but it's really just lost revenue. So, we've been going through some accounts and trying to figure out, you know, the moneymakers, basically, is what we call it. We've attacked some of those, but we're just trying to get a game plan together right now to see how we want to develop and go about it, because we want to do that in-house. We want to make sure it's done correctly. So, we don't want to go out there and just replace thirty-five hundred meters a month, because if they're not installed properly, if they're not put on the right account, then we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, and the building is in messed up, and it would take a significant amount of time to get that back straight.
Yeah. And I know we have sent a RFP out as far as upgrading our materials or...
That's right.
Things of that nature, our water mains.
That's right. We have worked through some, some pavement plan stuff that, that I think is a potential project that, that may go to the city, or to you, to you all. So, what we're doing is just trying to get ahead of the game, and we put that out. It's, it'll be in the paper Sunday. So, what we've done is, is come up with some materials that will be needed, and if, and if that pavement plan is punted, you know, then the bids won't have to be accepted. But we're just trying to be ahead of the game, and so, we've been working with that on, on that pavement plan to, to make sure when it's paid, we don't have to go back after that.
Right. Just two more questions. I know you don't like talking to us, but...
Oh, you're fine.
Mayor, if you don't mind, just, just two more questions. I know we're, we're talking about going paperless as well.
That's correct.
How, how far along are we with, with that?
So, we have designated an employee now to go ahead and start filing, to get those files in order so where we can get them scanned in electronically. We've met with some, some different companies that can start. When you come into the, to the office, there'll be no more paper applications. Everything may be done on an iPad.
That's good.
So, and everything will then be uploaded automatically. Like, you go to the doctor's office, you take pictures of your insurance card. So, we're trying to progress that way, and, and so, we have actually designated an employee that will be, that is through our department, but will, in reality, make its way through the city, and we'll start going through some of the files and try to coordinate that so everything is, is like it's supposed to be.
Great. Now, you're, you're not making that decision. Of course, the mayor's involved in that, too, right?
Yeah. I'm not throwing away anything. I promise you that. Not with, not with knowing. Yeah, everything, we, we communicate daily on, on pretty much everything that goes on and, and just very informed on everything.
Okay. Alright. Okay. I won't hog it, guys. I'm, I'm through with my questions. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, our citizens was aware of just some of the projects, some of the things that was going on, because that was one of the items that I did bring up as far as why this meeting was called. I won't hog all the questions. If any of the other counselors have any questions...
Yes. I, I have a follow-up.
Okay.
In regard to the water meters, you didn't start doing that this year. You've actually been doing that for how long now?
Since I've been here.
Since you, and you've been here two years, right?
That's correct. And what we've done, we started with the, the two-inch meters, but in the last probably four to six months, we started testing the, the small, the residential meters, because they are now out of warranty. So, the reason we didn't do that before is because they were still in warranty, so when it, when that meter failed, we could send it back, and it was full replaced. Well, now, we're in the eleventh year, which is not a warranted item anymore, so we're having to look at the, you know, the whole scheme of things totally different than we have in the past.
Mm-hmm. You also mentioned, I want to commend you in what you and your team have been able to do. Last fiscal year, ending of September of 2020, you had a surplus for the first time that I'm aware of of the water system. Is that correct? 700,000?
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I, I'd have to go back and look. I think there may be a surplus before that as well. I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't have that in front of me.
Which is very, very good, and I appreciate knowing that y'all are continuing to work on scanning and making it possible for all the employees to be able to have things on an iPad, which certainly does make for much better efficiency. Now, the other question I have, and I'm going back to coming to the city council meeting, sitting on the other side, not being a member of the council, if I'm not mistaken, there were some capital improvements that were made in 2014? Is that not correct, or you're aware?
That, I don't know. I can speak from the day I started until today.
I believe there was a bond issue, so that the water system...
Mayor Stewart can probably answer that.
Okay.
I would be speaking at it.
Yes, okay.
In, in 2014, when the city did a bond issue, when we were getting ready to bring Mercedes to the city, there was 1.5 million dollars that was allocated at that time to be able to do capital improvements, which was under Mayor Alexander's administration.
Right. Okay. I just, I just want to, I thought that was, that was another way to renovate and bring the water system up, moving it forward, because we are growing, and so, I thought there was a capital improvement that was done then. Thank you.
Yes. I just, I just want to stay on task now. We're, we're talking about, what I mentioned earlier is that we're just wanting an update on what projects were currently going on. That's, that's it, okay? So, I just want to make sure we just stick to the topic. We don't want to go back. We just sticking to the topic as far as what's going on now. That's what the meeting was about.
Right. The only reason I brought that up is because the issue of a capital improvement was mentioned, and so, I wanted to make sure that this isn't an isolated event. This is actually something that has been done. We've had capital improvements in the water system in the past.
Can I have a moment?
Yes.
Thank you. I think everything we're looking at is really good. We're skirting the subject, which is a typical thing with politicians. I'm not a politician. It's good that you're bringing up that we had previous capital improvements. That's wonderful. But right now, we've got 6.2 million in capital improvements that we have determined that need to be done for the city. My question to you, Jared, right now, as the director, superintendent, what is your actual title again, according to the personnel board?
So, the personnel board classifies me as a superintendent, and I think as Mayor Stewart as well, but I am through the personnel board, which is, they classify their positions completely different than what the city does, so the, the lingo is the same, but the job description is not. All I do on a daily basis is, is basically line those guys out every day on what needs to be done, is, as well as the office. Any major decisions go to Mayor Stewart. Anything that I don't feel comfortable making a decision goes to Mayor Stewart. So, he is, he is my point of contact when something is not normal, or if there's a fire that I don't feel like I need to put out by myself, he is the point of contact. So, him and I work very close together. We meet, I know when, when he took office, he said he wanted to meet a minimum of once a week for thirty minutes, but we have far exceeded that.
Okay. So, go, going from there then, and I appreciate your answer there to kind of narrow things down a little bit. How many hours do you spend a week working for the City of Irondale?
A lot.
He can't even count.
You know, I don't, it's, I don't, honestly, I don't, I don't hit a clock, and, and so, I just...
So, i- is it safe to say that your plate is fairly full?
Oh, it is.
With, with your existing duties outside of a, yes, it was a good point that we had a 1.5 million dollar capital improvement budget back in 2014, but this is 6.2 million, which is five times greater. Alright? Well, not quite five times. I can't do math that good in my head, but quite a bit greater. So, safe to say your plate's fairly full with your duties as they exist? And my question then to the superintendent of the water board is, is your plate fairly full right now with the water board, as your duties exist with the water board, outside the capital improvements we're about to undertake?
I would say yes, because I'm also your part-time mayor at the same time.
Yes. Well, I have to say that the mayor and the water superintendent is different, but every hour that you spend, I'm sure you're not a clock watcher. I'm spending thirty minutes as the mayor and twenty minutes as the water superintendent. They overlap, is I think the point you're trying to make, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. I mean, to me, there's no differentiation between the job. I mean, whatever it takes to be able to get things done, I mean, that's what we do. As Jared talked about, if you wanted to really to look at the job in a, I guess you could say, a business model, Jared is more of the COO. He deals with the operations, and I'm more of the CFO. I deal with the financial side of it, and as he said, at the end of the day, when a final decision has to be made about anything, I'm the one that makes that final decision.
The old cliche, the buck stops with you.
Yes.
Alright. So, when we're talking about salaries, guys, and this is, I guess, my area of expertise in the capitalistic world, which I'm learning so strongly is not the municipal world, but in the capital, capital world, it's about time, effort, and energy is what results in compensation. Then you can look under those things. You can look at monetary value from ten years ago and fifteen years ago versus monetary value today. You can look at municipal codes and municipal opinions and municipal codes, but I've found out in twenty-seven years of business and having to deal with various lawsuits from EEOCs to workers' compensation to contract devaluations, every attorney out there's got an opinion, and that's not to degrade attorneys, Ms. April. And so, every entity or committee that we could consult has an opinion of it. So, bottom line, to me, it comes back to what is the will of the citizens of Irondale? Okay? I, I've made this discussion many times, that I have my opinions, and, and I'm glad to share them, and I try to share them humbly. Sometimes I get on my soapbox a little bit too much, but at the bottom line, the end of the day, we're here to vote what the citizens' desires are, not our desires. Now, here's the rub in that. If enough citizens do not respond, then that's going to be some of my burden, because I haven't gotten the information out there good enough to get the response, but the citizens also bear a burden there, too. If you're not going to be involved enough to respond, then don't be upset about the results of how things get voted on. I will always vote... of how things get voted on. I will always vote the preponderance of the will of the citizens of District Four. That's not to say I don't care about the citizens of Irondale. I do greatly. But the ones that elected me are the citizens of District Four. So, what we're here to mainly talk about, with all our justifications of pulling in projects and asking about time and bringing up old stuff, is an increase to the salary of the superintendent of the water board, not the mayor. Time, effort, energy expended. If your plate is full already, and your plate is full for a part-time superintendent, that you're actually going to have to be spending more time as the superintendent, then some type of compensation increase is due, in my mind. Once again, my mind is not what I vote on. I vote based on what the citizens of District Four have shared with me. So, with that moving forward, I don't know what our appropriate pathway is, and I will divert to you, Ms. April, to see what our pathway is, should we choose to do that in this discussion. And then with that said, I'll relinquish the floor back to Committee President, Committee Chair Quayle.
As this is a committee meeting, it would not be appropriate to take a, a vote on this matter in a committee meeting. This is for discussion, discussion only, because this would be proper before the city council.
That's what I understood from earlier. Is it appropriate to discuss dollar amounts in a committee meeting?
It would certainly be proper, yes.
Okay. So, with that said, I have spoken about time, effort, and energy. I have spoken about dollar values of 1975 through 2021 being what they are. Now, we can start talking about the rest of our opinions and discussions as council members, and then I think we need to hear from the citizens, especially the ones that showed up to discuss this with us, because ultimately, what we do is what their desire is. It shouldn't be what our desire is. It should be what their desire is. Thank you, Councilwoman Quayle.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Quayle, if you don't mind, um, one thing, I have one question, request, rather.
Go ahead.
Um, I had the incorrect, uh, citizen. Um, I think we're finished with you, Jared?
Good.
I think so, council members? Yeah, thank you, Jared. I appreciate it. We had one citizen that would like to come up and speak. Is that okay?
Well, we actually have several.
Well, I, I said in the beginning, I said in the beginning, I had one. I, that was the wrong name. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I have a point of order, please. Councilwoman Quayle, as the, as the committee chair, and since we may be running out of time, do you want to limit the time?
Um, yeah, I think we need to limit time. Our council meeting starts at 6:00, so.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to the point.
We've, we've got time. Um, to be fair to everyone, I'm going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all, thank you for letting me go first. I'm sorry I've got, I'm in between meetings.
Okay.
Um, but I wanted to say, first of all, we love Irondale, of course. We love our water department, and we've always been so proud of our water department. And I, even I remember my parents talking about, you know, how blessed we were to live in Irondale and have the water we have. So, it's precious to me, and it's precious to a lot of citizens in Irondale. And I think it's very important that these capital improvements get done, and that they get done as timely, efficiently, and as inexpensively as we can. I remember back when we used to have a very expensive consultant. I tried to round up the numbers today, but I couldn't do it, um, who really, we paid lots and lots and lots of money. And I know on these projects, we may have to have consultants, but right now, we have, and he calls himself the CFO, I would say the CEO of our water department, has been around long enough to have some pretty extensive experience. I know we may have to use, uh, consultants for the engineering and that sort of thing, but I do truly believe he can save us some money, uh, with his experience and the time he's willing to put in. I don't think anybody can deny that since James gone into, has gone into office, uh, it's pretty evident that he's willing to put in the time to do whatever he has to do for our community, because I think he loves it as much as I do. So, when we look at a 2.2 million dollar budget, um, we're paying out $12,000 a year to the CEO of our water department, who ultimately, at the end of every day, is responsible for getting our water to us. And, um, and it's very important, um, I, I'm going to say this as a sidebar, uh, when everybody else is not able to water their lungs, when we're having a, um, you know, a drought, you know, we can keep right on watering. So, uh, we've always just been so proud of, of our water. But anyway, when you look at paying someone $12,000 right now compared to that 2.2 million budget, it's such a small amount. And even if we tripled that, you know, it, we're still just paying the CEO of our water department $36,000 a year. Um, and of course, he will be taking on more responsibilities with the, um, capital improvements, and, uh, and, uh, and we, and just to answer your question, Cindy, we have had many surpluses in, in years in the past. But anyway, thank y'all for listening. Uh, thank y'all for considering this. And, uh, as me, as one citizen, I'm certainly for it. I did a quick poll over the last 24 hours. I tried to call people in different ages, different, that have different backgrounds and ideas and different districts. I called 43, or had, I, I touched base one way or the other with 43 people. Um, 41 were for it, and two were neutral. So, that's what I found out from the folks that, uh, I'm, that also, uh, are, you know, care about this city and care about our water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim, one quick question, please.
Thank you.
What district are you in?
I'm in District One. I'm in John's district.
And did you sample, uh, citizens from all districts?
Every district, every district.
Thank you.
Do anyone else like to comment?
Ms. Moreno, I'm in District.
Can you pull the mic down so we can hear you, please?
I am short. Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of comments to make. I know I've worked full-time, did, was salaried, and I worked more than 40 hours a week. I had a family. I had a personal life. So, my concern is, you know, Mayor Stewart is a wonderful family man. He's a very involved church man. And so, involved with the city, and if he's going, if his plate's full as the mayor, his plate is full as being on the water board, then maybe we need to look at another position, because he's also talked about going back and getting his PhD. You know, there's, there's only 24 hours in the day, and I don't think it's fair to stress him. We talked about a city manager. Maybe that could take some of the load off the mayor, so that he would have more time to do these things. You know, they're both part-time positions, but they can add up to a lot, because I know he's very committed. So, that's, that's my thought.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Quayle.
Would anyone else like?
Councilwoman Quayle, if, and Councilwoman London, real quick, if you don't mind, can we strictly stick to the script as far as water superintendent, if you don't mind?
Well, I'm, I'm one that's open to everyone's suggestions, so.
Okay.
Any suggestions you have.
But that's what we put on the agenda. Yeah.
Let's see.
I think Councilwoman London had a question.
Two, I'm sorry.
Please come up, Mr. Mr., please come up, Mr. No, you're, you're right. We haven't, and that's kind of what I was thinking about, about the open discussion, to hear from you guys.
You know, we've gone all the way around it, but what are we talking about?
Well, Ms., uh, I think Ms. McDaniel just stated a dollar value, so that's the first one that's been on the floor.
Well.
So, I, I'm really love to hear if you're for it, then a dollar value. If you're against it, then, you know, please have, have your say.
Well, we don't know if we're for or against until, it's not our job to set those numbers.
I agree. Well.
It's your job to set the numbers.
Yes, sir.
And ask our opinion on the numbers that you set.
Okay, then maybe that's what Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman London was going to bring to the table.
And do I need to give you a dollar amount?
Uh, it looks like that's what Mr. Ross is asking for, and I think it's a great idea.
That's what y'all want? A dollar? You want, you suggest a dollar amount?
Uh, if Councilwoman Quayle does not have an objection, that this is hers.
She's the council chairperson. I'm gonna let her, it's your meeting.
It is my meeting, and everyone is free to speak.
Yes. I wait till everybody finish, finish speaking, and then I give you my dollar.
Well, you asked for a dollar amount, so, sir, if you want, I mean, Councilman London, if you want to go on.
My personally opinion, I think we ought to give our, uh, new superintendent $36,000 a year, because that's a lot cheaper than $150,000 for city manager.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Karen.
That's, that's my number. That's, that's my own person.
Can you please come up to the mic, please?
Excuse me. What I don't understand is, we're 100 days in. We knew what the job was and what it paid when we ran for the job. I'm not against an increase. I don't, I think that's a little high, but I don't think we're, we're staying where we were, what we ran on. We ran on, we knew what we got paid. It was a part-time job. We knew capital improvements were coming, but all of a sudden now, we're throwing out numbers. Uh, what are we getting for those numbers? You know, all of a sudden, we're not, we're not back to, even though they're two different jobs as one person, and we're still got the same, we're getting up there to the same amounts as when it was a full-time. Now, the, the full-time mayor before, part of his compensation came from the water. But I don't think it's right to bump it all the way up. And I'm not saying he doesn't, it deserves something for, for the water, but you're talking about tripling the salary of when we ran on it and we knew what we wanted, and we're just 100 days in.
So, so what would your suggestion be, Mr. Ross? Because I respect your opinion. You've been a businessman a long time.
I don't know. That's, that's.
That, that's kind of where we all are, so.
If y'all think that 36 is fair, then that's, then you stand on it.
Yeah. Let me, do you all mind if I say something? Uh, because I have to leave in a few minutes. But the first thing I want to say is, I never asked for this.
I didn't say that.
Well.
I'm sorry.
Well, you said, "I knew what it was when I ran for office."
Yes.
And you're absolutely correct. I never, and you can ask each one of these councilors. I never petitioned them for anything. I wasn't the one who asked for the increase. They just happened to see the work that I'm putting in for the city, and that's what they decided that they wanted to do. Number two, the last mayor was not a full-time mayor. To be a full-time mayor, you have to have a legislative act to make you a full-time mayor. So, any mayor that has been in this municipality since this municipality was formed in 1887 has been a part-time mayor. So, I just want to make that clear to everybody. I don't want you all to think that as soon as I got in office, this was my ploy or my plot to be able to do anything, because, see, I realize that it's somebody that's up above, that's going to take care of me, all of James Stewart needs. That's the reason that I ran. I wasn't even thinking about $21,000, because I know that I serve a God that has more than $21,000. So, I don't want you all to get it twisted, uh, to think that this is my idea, or this is my way of circumventing because the salary was reduced to make sure that there was no other individuals to run for office in the last election.
Point of order, please.
But I'm just stupid enough.
Point of order.
To do that.
Mr. Stewart.
I've been preaching now.
Mayor Stewart.
So, uh.
We don't know.
Hello, Ms. Ross. She's, she's making point of order.
Why the salary? The salary was decreased to make room for a city administrator.
We're talking about water.
It was not to discourage someone from running for office.
Can I get a part of order? Are we talking about the water?
Okay, but that, that, that issue was brought up, and so, I want to clarify.
Water board.
Point of order is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The mayor made a statement, and I'm wanting to correct that statement.
Thank you, thank you, Cindy.
Okay.
Thank you. You've corrected.
Well, I'm for Irondale, and I'm not, I didn't insinuate, I didn't mean to insinuate. If I did, that's not what I meant.
That's what you did.
Well. I see it as, as a way of, of bumping up where it was before, and that's not what, uh, you know, is still the salary. And I, I'm not saying it's, it's not something deserved, but so far, until he said that a while ago, y'all have got this meeting hole ass backwards. We never came out with a number to tell us what we were looking at.
Very good.
And we can't make our informed decisions. When I get bombarded, or I, I get a number, okay. That's a number, but we, y'all haven't had an executive session that talked about it or done anything to, to give us something to realistically look at.
Very good. So, you don't have a suggestion on a number, but you're saying, you say that.
I don't know what it involves. Y'all are just now telling us what it involves.
Yes, sir.
And what, does this mean that we're gonna go?
Okay.
That somebody's gonna go over all the bills, or is he gonna negotiate with the,
Understand.
With the suppliers?
Can we, can we, can we get Councilwoman Quayle? I'm not going to take over your meeting, but out of all due respect and with experience, we really need to stick to the topic.
Thank you.
Ross, you and I, we haven't agreed on much. I do understand that, but I do agree with what you're saying. We do need to talk about an amount. Councilwoman London, he did mention an amount. He did. So, I agree with that. So, we're, we're finished with that part. So, what we need to do is get back on, and it is our position to talk about an amount, which Councilwoman London just did. So, you are correct. It's really up to us, and it is, to determine the dollar amount, and that's what we need to talk about. Getting back to the originality of what this meeting is about. We've already went over one portion. Now, we need to talk about salary. We need to talk about the superintendent's salary, not the mayor. And this is the first time that, I'm gonna say publicly, I really wish, and I disagree with the mayor, because he really doesn't have anything to do with this. He have not solicited anybody. He have not said anything, and I personally wish he wouldn't have said anything, but I do understand, by the comment you made, he had to defend himself. But he doesn't have anything to do with this. He have not said anything about his superintendent's salary. That's what we're here for.
So, can we move forward now with public comments, please?
At the same time, we haven't heard anything.
Okay, we're, we're, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do now.
Point of order, okay.
The dollars, but on the job description.
That's what we're gonna do now.
What's gotta be done.
That's what we're gonna do now.
Very good.
That's what we're doing now.
And I didn't mean to insult anyone. It's just that this whole thing is backwards.
Well, I'm not the chairperson, but that's what we're gonna.
But you call the meeting.
I'm not the chair, though.
Thank you.
In all due respect, I turned it over to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. I appreciate it very much, and your, your point is taken. Yes, ma'am.
If I can, if I can ask a question when, when the time comes.
Yes.
Uh, okay. Um, Mayor, just a few questions, real quick. How long has it been since the pay has been increased, or when it established? Was it always that, that much?
It was in, uh, 1996.
1996.
So, it was 25 years when this salary was set, according to looking at the last ordinance that was adopted. It was 25 years ago.
Thank you. And, um, and my last question, your, your workload prior to, um, and I know you're, you're heavily involved, maybe more so than someone who might have served in your position. I know you're heavily involved in a lot of things, and I appreciate that. How much more involvement, based on these projects that we're describing, just out of curiosity, how much more time do you anticipate that taking out of your schedule? Two, 100% more time? Uh, you, like, maybe you spend two hours a day on water board stuff. Now, you're gonna have to spend four? Like, can you quantitate what you think your workload's going to increase by?
Um, I'll just take an estimate and say somewhere between 10 hours to 15 hours additional hours per week.
And you're probably spending how many hours a week on water board stuff now? I know, and you're not a clock, we've already talked about that, but.
I probably, uh, like Jared said, um, I mean, it's not a day that doesn't go by that.
Sure.
He and I doesn't talk. And, I mean, there's a lot of things that is involved in running a water department, other than what you see the people out in the fields doing, because it's somebody that has to be at home, just making sure, uh, that there's money there to be able to do things. Uh, there are individuals that, I talk to the engineers. I talk to the distributors. Matter of fact, I met with engineers today, uh, to talk about, uh, the city hasn't had a rate study in over eight years. So, we're looking at working with an engineer to be able to give a rate study, to make sure, uh, that we are charging a fair and equitable rate, uh, to be able to provide water. Uh, we want to make sure that the system is here for a long time, which that requires more capital investments that have to be made, which means that's creating a capital improvement plan and working with financial advisors, you know, to be able to do that. So, it's not where, you know, I just come down here every day and.
Sure.
You know, I'm just, you know, I don't deal with the water, but.
Yeah.
The water is a 2.2 million dollars operation, so it requires a lot of, uh.
So, would you say that you spend probably two to three hours a day on water? Is that fair? Is that totally off point?
Uh, I would say that that's fair.
Okay, so two to three hours, and you're gonna probably have to, uh, spend about another two to three hours per day based on the workload that's coming down. So, you say your workload's gonna, going to increase probably about 100%. If we had to grade school, quantify that. Is that a fair statement? 100%?
That's, that's a fair statement.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of try to do that real quick. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Ma'am, you can, if you'll give your name and.
I, I got it. Thank you. Um, Kay Mickel, 313 Grants Mill Drive, District One. Um, my concerns for the city, and I've just kind of like refreshed and refreshed in my mind mind while David was talking, um, and I'm gonna give you the grade school to me, that we're dealing with an equated pay for a true twenty-first century city, in my opinion. I think in the past, for the past twenty-five years that I've lived here at the same address, that we have taken baby steps forward, backwards, forward, for, backwards, you know, just little steps backwards and then we, we go forward. I'm looking forward to, over the next five years, this city leaps and bounds, not these little things that we can do to make do. And the infrastructure, the water system, has to be in place. Today, I did a little research, not specific to Irondale, so I don't know what he makes and I didn't know what he made until it was brought to us today. But I did research, um, water superintendents, Alabama, Georgia, looked on Indeed, looked various places, looked at job descriptions, and I assume, pretty safe to assume, the higher-paid ones that weren't larger cities were a combination of their jobs.
Right.
Which were a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, that could be a figure kind of department. Um, and I'm assuming that would have been both jobs in one person.
That's correct.
Whereas, because I'm thinking, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just a lovely teacher, but I don't think we afford that much for him at this time. So, I would. But with all of that said, I think that these two men, with what they're doing at this time and with the amount of money that they're actually dealing with, I would feel much safer as a citizen of Irondale to be paying someone their worth much more so than twelve thousand dollars a year to handle that amount of money as compared to the lower amount of money that he was act, that he would have been dealing with twenty, twenty-five years ago when I first.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Sue Miles and I live at thirty-four fifty-two Rock Ridge Circle. First thing I want to do is thank this young man, because we were not number one in the state this year, but we were close in the, when they all have the wa, the water thing. That's right. We were the runner-up and.
Number two.
I want to thank you. That was good. Next year, we'll be number one. Uh, I do want to ask Ms. Quaylar, so I fully understand, you made all these calls to the state, did one of them say yes?
The Alabama.
That this is, this is proper, what we're doing?
Wasn't, it was yet.
Superintendent, you said you called to see if it was.
Right. Let me, let me respond to your question. I called the Alabama League of Municipalities legal team to ask if, first of all, can we do this for a mayor? Not, not for a person such as Jared who fills both roles. Can we do this for a mayor? Are there any, uh, boundaries? Are there, is there anything in the, in the code that prevents us from doing this? And they said, actually, there was an attorney general opinion last year, which spelled it out for a full-time mayor, and that attorney general opinion said that you could pay a, a mayor that is serving as a superintendent twelve hundred dollars per month. You cannot go more than twelve hundred dollars per month. That was the AG opinion. Uh, Ms. Danielson, I know, are you wanting to make a comment?
I disagree. I disagree that that's a correct application, so.
So, you're giving me a yes?
I'm, I'm citing the AG opinion from March thirteenth of twenty-twenty.
So, we may be discussing something you can't, that none of us can do, that the council can't do.
If I may say something, Councilwoman Quaylar?
Yes, she may.
Um, yes, this is permissible to do. Um, the, the salary of the mayor as the mayor is completely separate than the salary of, you know, the mayor as the water superintendent.
Okay.
And so, this is, yes, something that we can do. It is permitted by law.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Now, my next question is to the city council. The former mayor brought this to you, that we had cut this salary in half. Did all of you vote for that?
We're, we're, that was the mayor's salary. We're, we're not talking about the mayors now, Sue. We're, we're talking strictly water superintendent.
Stay on water.
Right. We're, we're talking about that.
That needs to be answered. Did you vote for that?
Well, we're, we're wanting to focus on the superintendent.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
All right. I, I just was not here when you made the vote and I wondered how it meant.
All right. We, we need to give some other residents time to speak.
All right. Okay. My three minutes may be up. I, I do want to say this. Um, when you, when you think about, uh, the mayor's family, and I always come back to that, you have to consider the amount that he makes now. If you could support your family on that amount with a s, one son that's still in school, uh.
Ms. Miles, we're wanting to stay focused on the superintendent.
All right. I'm suggesting that you vote yes.
Thank you.
I don't care what the amount is.
Thank you.
Councilman Miles, hey, Ross Graham had about six minutes. You can get four more minutes. Can she get four more minutes?
I'm sorry.
She's in my district, so.
Councilman London.
District Three had about.
Councilman London.
Well, she had.
Point of order. Councilman London.
Ross had about a minute.
I'm in control of this meeting, sir.
Well, I just wanted to make sure she get a pressure.
What, what we did was there was a discussion between the superintendent and Mr. Graham and I took that into account.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
All right. Ms., do we have any other residents?
Can I make a point of order before the next comment?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to propose possibly some other dollar amounts to give you guys some information, because there is a little bit different opinion. We definitely want to hear from everyone. Uh, as an explanation, the League of Municipalities is a group of attorneys and other people that give opinions on Alabama ordinances. But once again, they are opinions, they're not laws, they're just opinions on the laws. We have a city attorney under contract that gives us legal opinions, that she would be the one defending us in lawsuits. So, moving forward, we need to talk about a dollar amount here. Uh, I would like, I'll just go ahead and propose, since Councilman London did, that we go somewhere between nineteen-hundred and twenty-five-hundred dollars a month. I don't see tripling the salary and, Mayor, that's not disrespectful to you as a superintendent, but I'm trying to be realistic and I deal with salaries and dollars every day. So, excuse me, sir, and I apologize for your time. Go ahead.
My name is Robert Crenshaw. I live in, at one oh-six Candlelight Lane, uh, in Stone Ridge. Uh, I have, uh, connections, uh, with people across the state is water is concerned. Irondale has some of the best water, uh, that, that I have been able to, 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 to see through looking at other municipalities. It's available. Now, when I first moved in, the pressure was very, very low at my house. Now, it's, it's good. It's really optimum. When I take a shower now, the, the sprinkle head is going. So, the water is being managed and, uh, I am proud of Irondale's water and, and I'm sorry we came in number two this time, but I think whatever we need to do to keep improvements, this is twenty-twenty-one, we're coming out of pandemic, whatever we can do to, to keep our management sufficiently paid to keep the quality of the water up, I don't have a problem with it. So, I just want to make sure that that's.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Ms. Pike, I believe, did you want to come, come forward, please?
And Miss Donna, remember three minutes.
Huh?
I said, remember three minutes.
Throw something at me, okay?
Oh, no.
You mean, would you, would you please raise the mic so we can hear you? Would you please raise the mic so everyone can hear you? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Not many people have trouble hearing me. Um, I, I'm not opposed, but I'm not aga, I'm, I'm not for and I'm not against, but I want to ask somebody, anybody, has anybody had their salary tripled lately?
How many?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, you know? And so, you know, it's not that Mayor Stewart might not deserve a, a, you know, a five-hundred-dollar raise, but I've seen the water department. I've seen the water department when they didn't have a dump truck, when they didn't have tools to work with, when things were very dire and that's why we borrowed the money to refurbish the water department, because what, if you don't have water, you don't have much. And if anybody's gonna get a raise, and this is just my opinion, it's the men down in the hole. It's the men repairing the water mains.
We did give them.
Took care of them.
I, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about if anybody's gonna get some kind of supplement.
Mm-hmm.
It's the men that keep the water running. The men that do it every day. Now, you know, Mayor Stewart is a part-time mayor, but I'm gonna tell Mayor Stewart something. Anytime you're in politics or education or anything, you have a servant's heart, or you should, and you're gonna be doing a lot of things that you're not gonna get paid for. But for the good of the city, for the reason that you were elected, that people elected you, you will go over and above and beyond, and I hope so, and especially for our water department, because it's our most precious asset. And I'm just, I'm just forewarning you, because you've never been in politics, but I'm telling you, you've got to have a servant's heart.
I think I've been in.
And, you know, I know you've done some research.
Let me answer this for you, Ms. Pike. I've been in politics for twenty years. I've been served on the CDA for six years, a city counselor for six years and city clerk for eight, for a combination of twenty years.
But you always clocked in and you clocked out.
No, I didn't.
And when you became mayor, you don't clock in or clock out.
I didn't clock in when I was a secretary.
Don't do that.
Point of order, please.
That's not a little.
All right. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Counsel.
Yes, please.
Councilman Quaylar, while we have a citizens coming up, um, we need to make a recommendation. I would like to recommend, make a recommendation to the, uh, city council from the water board. I would like the, uh, opinion of the councilors after this comment.
Um, my name is Susan Barnett and I live at thirty-six oh-five Haven Hill Place. I just have one question. How many of you have not had a raise in the last twenty-five years?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Since we're running close.
We're running.
You're one.
Short on time.
Right. I would like to, um, I would like to suggest to the council that we, um, raise the annual salary of the, uh, water superintendent, uh, anywhere between twenty-four and thirty-six thousand a year. Can we discuss the amount at this time?
What I'd like to do, Councilman Wilson, and this is based on the strong recommendation by the Alabama League of Municipalities, and that is that we seek an attorney general opinion on how much we can increase the water superintendent's pay when he is, when he is employed as a part-time mayor. I think we need to have and ensure that we are in compliance and I would like to recommend that we seek an attorney general opinion on this issue. I would be much more comfortable doing that.
Okay.
May I speak now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that, Councilman Quaylar, that is a valid point, but I will say this, we, we have an attorney. That attorney and her law firm stand behind us and give us legal opinions. So, the Alabama League of Municipalities, what makes them more qualified than our city attorney? Uh, I understand the attorney general may be, but all we're doing is, is kicking a can, kicking a can down the road, because even if attorney general comes back with an opinion, ju, his opinion is not a direct violation or is not a judgment of law, it's simply that, a legal opinion. And we have other legal opinions. So, while I, I v, validate your suggestion, I just don't know that it's necessarily needed. I would love to, in the few minutes we have left, hear yes or no's, if anybody is prepared to come and say, just yes or no.
Well, what I would like to do, Councilman Box, as someone who's chairman of this committee, and again, I've stressed, I want to make sure that we are in compliance and there is no one that is more qualified than an attorney general that can tell us whether we are, so that if there are any lawsuits that are filed, we have his opinion and that will hold in court. And this is the reason that I'm asking that we do what the Alabama League of Municipalities have said. Since it is not spelled out concretely, you need to get an attorney general's opinion. That is what they have said, sir.
Okay. I think our attorney did say it was spelled out in her legal opinion concretely. So, we may have a different legal opinion than our attorney, but that's why we have an attorney.
True.
Anyway, but I'm back to, I think we need to honor the citizens that came here. If there's anyone else here that, that wishes to speak, I'm sorry, we don't have time for everybody to give their host field, but if you come up and say.
We've got one more minute before.
If you come up and say yes or no, then I think we could do that.
Well, no, the ones who have not spoken.
Exactly. The ones who have not spoken, if you would like to come and just say yes or no.
We've got thirty seconds before our council meeting, Councilman Box.
Very good. And we got one lady that wants to speak.
Okay.
And thank you.
I say yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to call this meeting, uh, can we adjourn now?
One last, one last thing. I do want to at least acknowledge the fact that we do have three comments from the virtual room. We've got Daryl Washington, the mayor's total compensation should be on par with the area mayors of the same size. Uh, we've got Kathy Kincaid Anthony, why not make the salary proposal to the overall city budget? That should be a quantitative measure. And then Ron Bishop says, we have a rate increase in place already. I just wanted to acknowledge those comments as being present for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Spivey.
I think the rate is crazy.
I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm, I make a motion to adjourn.
We still gonna make a recommendation, but.
I thought we did.
We did.
I thought you did.
We, we made a recommendation, but that will be coming to the council.
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn. Will you second, Councilman?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.
You want to give everybody a quick break? You want to give everybody a quick break, President, House President?
Councilman Box, if you would lead us in a word again.
Lord, I thank you. You know, we were just here before you minutes ago, and we didn't succeed in doing the things that I asked you we could do. I think we got better. Lord, help us get better every minute, every second, every step, every breath, to serve you through our actions, our attitudes. Even when we disagree, we can disagree with kindness and with love, compassion, mutual humor, respect. We ask you again for your wisdom, and help us have better ability this time to do better. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being with us tonight for the prior meeting and the current one. Thank you, Councilman Box, for opening us up. This meeting is officially called to order. We'll start with a roll call. Councilman London.
President.
Councilwoman Quayle.
Here.
Councilman Box.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Present.
Perfect. And myself, present as well. Our next item is, we have two sets of minutes to approve, so I would like to take those separately, like we've done in the past. So I would accept a motion for the first set of minutes.
Councilman President.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
The minutes for April the 21st. I'd like to request an amendment for number 10, item number nine, under new business, which is the appointment of a city clerk treasurer. I would like to request that we add the words after resolution 2021-41, which appoints Lou Jackson as city clerk-treasurer.
It's a fair request to go ahead and put that name in the official records. Frank, if you could get some corrective minutes. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Other than that, are there any other corrections for that order of minutes? Were there any other corrections?
No.
Anybody else have any issues with those particular sets of minutes? I'll take silence as a no. I'll accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes with the amendments adding which appoints Lou Jackson as city clerk treasurer into item number nine, and that we approve minutes dated April 26.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now I accept a motion for the second set of minutes.
I thought she just tried to include that in the first.
I did both.
Oh, you did both?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. I didn't hear that part. All right.
Yes.
Fair enough. So we have accepted both sets of minutes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next agenda item would be the approval for the current bills. Accept a motion for the payment of current bills.
I make a motion we approve the current bills in the amount of $100,267.81.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Thank you very much for that. We find ourselves now looking for any professional or consultant reports. Any professional or consultant reports? Okay. This time, we find, we would normally have our mayor's report, but he did have to leave early. If you notice, he did get up and leave, but that was something he stated he was going to do prior. So no misunderstandings there. That was planned. Moving on to any department heads. Do we have any department heads with us tonight that need to make a report? All right, fair enough. Now we find ourselves looking for any council member reports. Councilman London, we'll start on your end.
First of all, thank you, Council President. I have a few things announced. First, from the Exchange Club, our next, the next meeting will be May the 11th. And our special guest speaker for that day will be Speaker Stacia Hopkins, and she's from the Child Abuse Prevention Center. That's May 11th, and at, we don't have a time on here. I was thinking 5:30. I don't have a time here. 5:30? 5:30? 11:30? 11:30. 11:30. And the guest speaker again is Stacia Hopkins, and she's from the Child Abuse Prevention Center. Also, May the 25th is our anniversary celebration. And then also, just this announcement, we lost one of our members, Mr. Walter Kennedy, who passed away April the 20th at the age of 92. So our prayer goes out to him and his family as they go through their bereavement process. Also, I have another announcement. I have a special guest, and I won't give the rest of my time. I have our principal at the high school, Mr. Sahar, and he's gonna come and introduce, we have our two head basketball coach here and our head football coach. And I'm excited about these two guys. These two guys, I think for the first time in Shades Valley history, we have two state champions coaching our athletic teams. So we're excited. So Mr. Sahar, you can have the rest of my seconds. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Come on up, come on up here. Come on up front. Let them see you. Let them see where you are. Come on up here, Howard. Come on up here, Ruben. Come on up here, sir.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Mahoney mentioned, my name is Todd Keesahar. I'm a principal at Shades Valley High School. And I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our two head coaches. Meeting left is Coach Alvin Howard, our head basketball coach. And apart left is Coach Ruben Nelson, who is our head football coach.
You two guys, Coach Howard was at Winona, state champion, Winona, and Ruben Nelson. Ruben, I'm just telling you about Coach Nelson, he didn't have a choice accepting the job. His wife is a graduate of Shades Valley. So she was gonna die to his heart if he didn't accept the job. So we're just glad to have both of these guys running our program, state champions. So they know how to win, and they love children, they love kids. And so we're excited about having these guys leading out with young men for today and hopefully for a long, long, long time. You guys got anything you want to say?
I just want to say thank you. We appreciate you guys opening your arms up to us. We are very excited to be with Mr. Sahar. We're gonna build something really special in Shades Valley. Hope you guys come out and support. But I can give you that as well, as kind of that. We're doing some special things up on that hill. You're just really bright, really, really bright. You guys can come in and support us as much as you possibly can, putting a great product on the floor as well as in the classroom. Thank you, guys. So very much.
I agree with Coach Howard. I think on the leadership of Mr. Sahar, we're gonna try to level expectations, take kids to the top of the charts in the academic world. We just want you all to support from behind. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Mr. London, and yes, I also want to introduce one other person, Dr. Kimberly Evans. Be waving hands. She's like director of basketball operations.
That's right. No, I didn't see you standing back there. I didn't see you standing back there.
She's also an outstanding English teacher, but it's not English class. She had her as well.
Thanks, Doc.
Good job.
That's my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman London. Councilwoman Quayle, your report. Thank you very much, fellas.
Before they move, I just want to make just one comment, real short. I appreciate you guys coming. Coach Howard, I know we've met. And Coach Nelson, it's so funny, I've been in Birmingham all my life, but we have never kind of crossed paths. But I am so excited to have you, looking forward to you being at Shades Valley and bringing discipline. Not saying that we don't have it, but maintaining that discipline that we have with our kids. So looking forward to working with you guys and hope for great things, and bless y'all. All right?
Okay. Thank you, fellas. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Quayle.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here this evening. I'd first like to start off by thanking our first responders in our police department, fire department, and our public works departments for the tremendous work that they did yesterday during the terrible storms that we experienced in our city. These gentlemen and ladies kept us abreast. They kept us updated on which streets were blocked due to trees that were falling, or we had water flooding in some streets, you weren't able to travel. But I really appreciate everything that you did to clear up the streets and get the word out on which streets were open and closed, which made it possible for our residents to get home and to come from their home to their jobs safely. So thank you very much. The next thing that I'd like to ask is, and this is because I've had some questions regard to our infrastructure in Irondale. And I have some questions for Frank about the roads that have been paved this year. We have a pavement plan, and in looking at this pavement plan, there are 64 roads that are scheduled for crack sealing work. And then we have 18 roads that are scheduled for chip sealing. So I'm wondering where we're at with this work and then where we plan to be in the next few months. And then the next question that I'd like to ask Frank is for an update on our stormwater drains. We've got several stormwater drains that are in dire need of attention, and I'd be interested in getting a list of these stormwater drains and the cost that's gonna be involved. So if you could please update me on this, please.
Yes, on your second question, I'll get you a list of the storm drains, and they're citywide. Every district is in need of storm drain repairs.
Can we get it by the next time we meet as a council?
I can get you the list.
Okay.
But as far as the quantitative cost, I may not can get you that.
Okay.
Point of order, that needs to go through the mayor. We can't ask any personnel for the city anything. We can't request them to give us anything. That needs to go through the mayor.
We can't get a list, Councilman Box?
You have to go through the mayor.
But we do have a pavement plan in place, and we do have 64 roads.
Right. We cannot request, in all due respect, Council Quayle, we can't respect, we can't ask any city employee to provide anything to, we need to go through the mayor.
Can I ask, may I ask a question, Council President? Because I'm new to this.
For this clarification process, yes.
Thank you, sir. And I don't mean to interrupt your time. I just think that's a good thing to learn. Because our constituents come to us for these questions, and so I think that's why she's relaying them. But if that's the case, is that why we call this the councilman's report? Because we should get those answers before we report on them, rather than asking questions on it? Because I've been guilty of asking questions during this time period, too. And if that's out of order, I don't want to do that. I want to get the answers so that I can give a report, not ask questions.
Right. I mean, it's.
Assessment.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So, just for the sake of some clarification, we can't ask for an update on our pavement plan from the public works gentleman?
That would be a policy determination as the mayor is over the administration of the city, and the city council is over the property and the money. So that is really not a legal question. That's more of a policy question.
So if it's just for an update on the crack sealing of the roads, that doesn't entail money? That's just asking for an update?
I think for a policy standpoint, the way things have been handled previously is we would ask the mayor to get that information from us, from that department head. And then we could then turn around and ask the mayor for that information to be supplied from us that he had retrieved from the department head. The only time we've ever directly engaged a department head or an employee has been in typically these settings, where like maybe Chief McDaniel had some things that, you know, were on the agenda, and I would ask him to come up and explain those. That was actually even out of line. I should have asked the mayor to describe that, and if he needed backup, he could have called Chief McDaniel, but I was actually out of line for calling Chief McDaniel up here. And it's a similar situation with asking a department head to provide you with information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report, Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Councilman Box?
Guess my 14 years didn't matter, huh?
And there you go. Councilman Box? Hey, hey, high five. Thank you, Coach. I appreciate it.
Do I have to do sprints after me? Well, with that education, that helps me know how to actually give a report from now on. So I do thank you for that, Councilman Wilson, and Council President Spivey, and Councilman London, and Councilman Quayle. That's good information. I want to announce that tomorrow night, there's gonna be a, I don't know if it's really a neighborhood association meeting, but there's gonna be a neighborhood meeting in Hampton Place at 6:00 PM. And scheduled attendees are myself, the mayor, I was told, Chief McDaniel, Mr. Pennington from Public Works, and Chief Wiggins were scheduled to, are representative of theirs. But that hasn't been confirmed to me. The only ones confirmed I know is me and the mayor. It is for that neighborhood, but I don't think that those good neighbors in Hampton Place would have any problems with any other district four citizens attending, or really any citizens from the city. But if it gets too big, then it might not be as a close knit of a thing as everybody's thinking about for Hampton Place. With that said, that will conclude my learning session for the evening.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilman Box. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Council President. Just real quick, I just want to let everyone know that we had a fantastic grand opening on last Saturday at Edet Panoptic. The old Green Acres building. If you missed it, you missed the treat. We have one of the best standalone buildings here as far as restaurant is concerned. And everybody's been talking about eating restaurants, well, we have one of the best that has moved into the city of Irondale. So you guys, please go and patronize that particular establishment, because the food is delicious. I just have one question, Council Quayle. Was anyone there from the CDA?
Where?
At the grand opening.
The grand opening for?
For Edet Panoptic.
I had no idea. I had another commitment. It was on a weekend, so I wasn't able to attend. So I couldn't answer that question.
Gotcha. Thank you. I just want to let everyone know, just please go by and get some good food. You will enjoy it. Second, if you don't mind, Council President, I have a special guest here by the name of Mr. Jay Robeson, and he would like to kind of tell us some things, some good things that could come to Irondale. I think it's a good opportunity for us as a city as a whole, not just District 5, but as a city, that he needs to let us in on. Mr. Robeson, if you don't mind, you can come forward and you're a guest. Make sure you're talking in that mic now. I know you know all about talking in the mic, so you're pretty good.
Well, thank you so much, Council Wilson, and to Council President Spivey. I first want to commend you all in your leadership, your sacrifice of service, and what you do for the city of Irondale. And I want to commend you, too, on the great recognition of the head coaches that you just acknowledged today. Both of those guys I know well. I played with one of them in college, and Ruben Nelson, and then Coach Howard coached my son. So you are doing a tremendous job in the city of Irondale and your school system. I'm here today, Council Spivey and the other council members that are present, to continue talking about sports and how important sports are gonna be to the community of the city of Irondale. This gentleman here, Larry Simmons, the president of PME Sports, is bringing numerous sporting events through June and August of 2021 to the city of Irondale. 7-on-7 tournaments, NFL flag football camps. We've actually talked to Mr. Sahar, the principal at Shades Valley High School, along with Coach Nelson, to bring these players and these teams from all over the country to Shades Valley High School. So we're excited about the opportunities to all the council members, to the citizens that are here, to bring great first-class sporting events. At this time, I'd like to introduce you, and I have a letter for everybody. I don't know if we have a clerk, Mr. Clerk, if we can pass these out, for the council members to take a look at as it relates to the events. But we would love to get the city of Irondale's consideration of support. We're looking at a lot of room nights, a lot of restaurants. We're grand opening, just missing one, Council Wilson. Of opportunities to bring an economic impact to the city of Irondale and over the next three months, and continue these efforts from this point on. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Larry Simmons, the president of PME Sports.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Jay, for the introduction.
Thank you, Jay, for the introduction to the council and to the city of Irondale. Thank you for your time. A little bit about our organization. Organization's been in Birmingham seven years. I've personally been doing mentoring, working in education for over 12 years. This organization actually started in Irondale 12 years ago, with kids from various communities throughout the city. It has grown since to over 300 kids across the state. So, we do camps, as Mr. Roberson mentioned. We do 7-on-7s. We do ACT prep programs for the kids. Just recently, one of the kids, Sam Howard, who graduated from Shades Valley High School, was a kid that just started playing football in the 10th grade. He just received a full scholarship after he walked on at Austin Peay. So, and we have numerous Kool-Aid McKinstry, who's Alabama's probably starting cornerback this year, came through our program. So, we have kids from five stars to guys that just need that extra push of development, to guys who are not so, don't have as many resources at home that we provide. As well as 300 kids, growing up to 300 kids, we have right at 10 coaches and mentors throughout the program that reach throughout the whole city and the state. The importance of this program is not just football, but let's just face it, sports, it's like kid to a candy, right? It's going to draw the attention. And we can post billboards, we can send flyers out, we can try to have gatherings. But the only thing that's going to catch these kids' attention is something that they're into, and sports just happens to be something that most of our kids in our communities are into. The vision is to bring these events into the city to indeed increase economic impact, but also increase the impact that we have on our communities through our program. So, we want to be a resource to the city. We're looking forward to, I just recently moved here two weeks ago, like as Jay mentioned about the Shades Valley coaches. Coach Nelson actually coached my son. He's going away for a full scholarship, four-year scholarship. Guys, he's the guy. He's going to change some things, man. He's going to make it happen. So, me and Coach Nelson are great friends. Me and him have talked with Mr. Sahard, as Jay mentioned, and we're ready to go. We just want the backing and the support of the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Hold on one second. I really appreciate you guys coming, Ms. Simmons and Mr. Roberson. You know, we talk about sports all day, but I want to make sure there's some educational experience when these kids come in. You know, we can play sports all day, but once we get hurt or we injure ourselves, you know, that's it. So, we have to have it up here before we can have it down here. So, I just want to make sure, as far as, you know, you're soliciting this support from the city, you may have mentioned it, and I may have missed it, but if we can throw some kind of educational piece during these 7-on-7s or during these camps or whatever is going on, and like Councilman London, Councilman London, he's a very much advocate, like we all are, for girls at that. So, if there's any girls' tournaments or any kind of girl events, women's events is coming in.
We just added women's girls' flag football to our program.
Okay. Well, good.
It just got added maybe three or four days ago.
Okay.
And we'll be rolling that out this summer.
All right. So, I know you guys will be coming back and soliciting support. Of course, we all have our discretion areas at that. So, each counselor, you know, it's their decision. But from a city standpoint, I feel real good about what you guys just said. And like you said, it'll be a big economic impact that will be coming into the city. If we can get, because 7-on-7 is big, is huge in these communities. So, even if you don't follow sports, you see it on TV, and it's just huge having those amount of people coming into our city. So, I won't beat a dead horse. I appreciate you guys coming. Any councils have any comments?
I do. I have one question. You mentioned ACT prep. What is ACT?
What is the ACT?
Yes.
It is, it's an exam that is.
You're talking about the college preparatory ACT?
It's an exit exam that you have to qualify at a certain.
Right. I got you there. I mean, I understand. I went to university and then graduated, did my graduate studies, and I'm a graduate also. I just wanted to get clarification on what you were referring to when you said ACT.
Yes, ma'am. ACT, the SAT, also any academic prep. We actually have 200 kids over the last 10 years that have gotten scholarships outside of football. I'm glad you brought that up, the educational piece, because what happens with our kids is that regardless of what, when they test out, we get progress reports from their teachers every two weeks. If you're not passing, you're not playing. And, you know, we're going to, we're taking kids to Miami. They're going all across the United States, places that they've never been. We actually fund ourself college tours that are done in Mr. William Edwards, that was murdered four years ago, a kid at Woodlawn that we honor every year doing a college tour for kids. We bus them. We take them to different schools. They meet with administration, and they're set up whether they play football or not. So, I think that's very important that you brought that up. I'm glad that you did.
Thank you.
When I come in, I mean, you mentioned it earlier. I heard you say, you know, you're talking about the educational piece. You can't walk on without having academics anywhere. And so, that lets me know that the educational piece is in place. And then also for the flag football, girls play flag football, too, right? And flag football is one of the fastest-growing sports in the state of Alabama. So, I appreciate it. You're going, but you better have something for Ava. You better have something for Ava. You know, I don't know Ava. Ava's his daughter. She plays for me. So, you better have something for Ava. We're going to hold you accountable for that, all right? I just want to make sure you know that. I want to make sure you know that.
Council London, I didn't mean to break everything public today. I was trying not to expose everything, but you put it out there. But I will say this, to this gentleman's credit here, thank you, Council London, for saying that. He mentored my son. He kept up with my son's academics. Trey Roberson is now headed to the Air Force Academy to play football in July for the Air Force Academy. So, thank you, Mr. Simmons, for what you've done for my son and many other young men in this community. Thank you so much. Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. McCord, anything?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, let's talk about action. When do you propose, as far as, does it have a date on here? Okay, from June until August?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Those are proposed dates. We haven't solidified everything with the NFL. We just inked the deal with NFL flag. That'll be, so you guys going, citizens are going to ride around. They're going to see NFL flag this way. You know, going to head towards Shades Valley. We're just now getting that. They want to kick it off a little sooner than June. We want to make sure that we have everything lined up before we do it. So, we're looking at June, into July, maybe the end of July.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, fellas. Appreciate your time.
Yep. I know it took a little bit longer. I apologize.
You're all right. We'll talk badly about you at another time. As far as my report goes, just kind of three areas that I want to cover. I, through the mayor, I asked permission to have Frank send me updates on the recycling program. I've done a poor job on reporting that, but Frank just recently sent me the letter, the numbers from last month's recycling, and it consisted of, it was 28% contamination. That number is about, it's been kind of flat, just so you guys know. But I committed to reporting those numbers. Frank's been nice enough to send them, but I have not reported those numbers as of late. So, that is the, that's the April numbers for our recycling campaign. In regards to planning and zoning, there was a planning and zoning meeting last Thursday. Three things were on the docket, and once again, planning and zoning is a recommending board. Many things that, pretty much all things that go through planning and zoning will find themselves on the council docket for official decision. The planning and zoning just sort of basically gives us a feel of what the thought line is. There was a residential piece on Grant's Mill Road, across from the new dentist office roundabout. It was proposed to go from residential to commercial, and that passed on a four-to-one vote. And then there was a track of land on Second Avenue North in Old Irondale, currently zoned residential. It was asked to go industrial, and that failed on a four-to-one vote. And then Price High Tower had some replating issues as far as his new development on top of the hill over by the high school. So, that was the update from planning and zoning. And then from Roblox Plaza, just one update over there. Frank shared it with me some time ago, and I just have failed to mention it. During all the storms, the tornadoes and things that came through last month, some of the heavy trucks caused a culvert to collapse, and they replaced that. And one thing he wanted to make sure that I mentioned was the fact that when they replace those culverts, they have to kind of pack them with a loose rock. I know I'm really dumbing that down, and I apologize. They pack it with a loose rock, and that has to settle before it can be repaved. So, it's just kind of settling right now, and that is on the agenda to get repaved. So, that culvert became an issue due to some of the heavy trucks, and it's in the process of being fully mended. So, thank you for that. That concludes my report. Now, we find ourselves looking for any reports of boards or non-council committees. Any reports from any boards or non-council committees? Fair enough. All right. Council deliberation on agenda items only. Deliberation, that's an interesting word. I'm going to call it consideration. I was asked to do something, and I didn't do it. But I want to make sure, as we move through our proceedings, that we are objecting with each other and discussing matters in a respectful manner. That's just, I'm going to just leave it at that. I don't think we need to expound too much on that. But from a housekeeping standpoint, I'm going to be much more cognizant of that going forward. And I will be looking at our internal policies as far as how we run these meetings. And we'll probably be asking for some suggestions from a few of you as we look at updating our procedures going forward. That being said, as far as deliberation, we have two items on the agenda. One is an old business. That means it was here two weeks ago, and we asked for it to be moved back. And then we have another item of old business as well. So, that being said, we know, we've heard about these. We do have a gentleman with us who wasn't present last time. That's important. So, sir, I would ask you to go ahead and come on up. I see you back there with your information. If you could introduce yourself and give us an idea of what you're proposing.
Hey, good evening, council. I'm Lanier Ruten. I'm the manager, operations manager for Phoenix Water Resources. We are, for those who don't know, we are kind of now 459 I-20 corridor where sewer was not served in the past, and we've built out and grown over the past 10 years, I guess, since our first franchise with the city of Irondale. And we are in the Cohaba River watershed, and that watershed costs, does this affect? Can y'all hear me, understand me?
I'm good.
The watershed, it takes a lot to treat sewer to make sure it's clean before it returns to the watershed. And COVID was no friend to us as well because flushable wipes is a misnomer. They come down the pipes, they clog the pipes, they clog pumps. It costs money. It costs us additional money. So, in return, I'm just requesting that a small rate increase with this agenda item. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you take us through your increases real quick? I had them written from my previous notes from last week, but I did not bring that file with me.
We have a residential increase of, it's roughly 10 cents a day from $42 to $45 a month, and the minimum is less than 3,000 gallons a month. It tiers after that, but most people don't use more than 3,000 gallons a month, at least in my service area. The commercial increases are roughly 4%, 4.5% increase from the prior. It's a minimal, when looking at all the customers, it's something that means really it's a cost of living increase in my mind, but that's obviously subject to relative judgment.
Thank you. And then as far as our legal opinion goes, do you have any feedback or anything for us to consider regarding this agreement?
I just, I just have one question. Did you say that the first tier tiers from zero to 3,000 gallons? Because what we currently have in the ordinance is 2,245 gallons.
That's because it's in cubic feet. I just rounded up. That is technically correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, gotcha. Now that we've heard from Mr. Lanier and from legal counsel, Councilman London, any questions?
I do have, but my computer's acting up. So, you can come back.
Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes, I just, for the sake of our audience that's here, it has been three years since we've had this agreement with Phoenix Water Systems. And as the gentleman noted, this increase for residential would be about 10 cents per day. So, we're talking about $42 to $45. And for commercial, I actually have the digital for you. It's 0.01690. That was the old rate, and it's now 0.01766. And for institutional, it's 0.01742, and it then becomes 0.01821. So, as he mentioned, with COVID and all of the additional expenditures, this is part of the new agreement that they are asking to have with the city. Those are the only comments I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Box?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Lanier. Good seeing you again.
Good seeing you, too.
All right. Will this impact the impact fees? Now, I'm just trying to get a clear picture. As far as the impact fees, would that change?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Okay. All right. That will not change. Will the, as far as the franchise payment that's being made to the city, will that still be 3%?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I have no other questions.
Councilman London?
I've not found that.
You're good?
It was fixed.
And I, myself, I'm good. So, I appreciate you, you coming here.
I can show you all pictures of sewer pumps clogged if you'd like to show them.
I saw that. That was, that was pretty brutal. So, I appreciate the work you do.
It's no fun.
Yeah. But thank you very much. We have no further questions. So, obviously, feel free to hang around.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. All right. As far as our second item on old business, that would be the Resolution 2021-R38 allows the mayor to enter into a contract between the city of Irondale and Avenue Insights and Analytics. He described the, he described the item last time it was up. He's obviously not here for any clarifying questions. Legal, do you have any input?
Other than that, this would be an agreement to collect, you know, past due and unpaid business license fees.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Councilman London? Councilwoman Quayle?
The only thing I was a little, I just wanted a little clarity. We just passed the resolution for the tax amnesty for past due accounts. And now we're coming into this. Will this start, and legal counsel, you can answer this. Will this start after that? Is that what will happen? Because we just passed that amnesty.
Correct. That's only for the month of May 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Box?
Councilman Quayle answered my question or got it answered.
Gotcha. And Councilman Wilson?
I have no question about the topic.
Outstanding. And I have no questions either. Thank you very much. All right. That being said, with these two items, we would go ahead and approve the agenda.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to add an item as far as recommendation to be added to the agenda. Ordinance number 2021-10, I make a recommendation to raise the water superintendent's salary not to exceed $30,000 annually. And that is up for discussion.
Number that again for me?
Ordinance number 2021-10.
Not to exceed?
30,000 annually. And just as a caveat, just based on experience, if that ordinance can be, and I guess I need to kind of bounce this off of our legal team. Even though the administration will change in the next, what, four years? Because we've got an additional year, can I put like up to, for four years, and then the next administration will come in and they can vote on it as well? Is that okay to put this in the ordinance?
It could be changed by the ordinance, which actually sets the salary of the water superintendent. Could be changed at any time, and so you wouldn't need to put a limit on there.
Got you. Okay. I just always, you know, in due respect to the next administration coming in, I always feel as if it's their duty or whatever to look at each contract as each administration comes in. It's always been. contract as each administration comes in. It's always been out of respect.
I understand. And this would be a, a part of the city code.
Okay.
Which is actually a little bit different than a contract. So, but I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will, I will start with that. I would prefer, Councilwoman Wilson, and I definitely am open to considering it, I would prefer to see it, the, the actual piece of legislation drafted, just to, to read it and make sure that all points were nailed down. That is my personal opinion, but I am open for, for feedback on that as far as it being placed on the agenda tonight. Councilman London, what say you?
Could you run it by me one more time? You would rather have the AG's opinion? That's what you're saying?
No, no, no. I would rather have you and legal get together and draft it like we would a normal ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So that we can actually read it before we decide it.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's my pushback. No, no worries. Fair question.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. Councilwoman Claire?
Council President Spivey, I would like to add a resolution, 2021-R-39, which would have our city attorney request an AG opinion on the water superintendent's pay, how much that pay could be, so that we can ensure that we are in compliance. And we would have that opinion in case anyone were to file a lawsuit. We would have that opinion to fall on.
Fair enough. Councilwoman Box? Now, we're talking about two different issues. What say you?
Okay, so I'm trying to grasp what we're doing now, so.
So, Councilman-
And forgive me, I run businesses, I don't run cities. So, from what I understand in layman's terms here, we're saying that Councilman Wilson is proposing a resolution
Ordinance.
To, an ordinance, excuse me, to raise the water superintendent's salary to $30,000, but he's saying that's open for discussion. We're discussing that, we're discussing that on the floor. Council President Spivey, you've said that you don't necessarily want to put that on the agenda tonight. You want to see it drafted and come back as an actual written or typed resolution rather than bringing it forward to vote on tonight. Councilman London, I'm sorry, then Councilperson Quayle says that she actually wants to get the AG's opinion on whether we can, can do this or not. And then Councilman London actually said that he's okay with actually putting it on paper like you want to do before we move forward.
Is that an accurate representation?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, Councilman Wilson.
You are, you are agreeing to go ahead and put it on the agenda tonight?
If you agree with that, then I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, understood. Gotcha. So, he's saying he's good with how Wilson presented it.
He's good with how Councilman Wilson presented it, to put it on the agenda tonight, talk about it. If it comes to a vote, vote on it. If it doesn't come to a vote, then we can look at doing what you're talking about and/or what Council, Councilperson Quayle is talking about.
What we're talking about is cutting to, we're talking about cutting an ordinance on the floor and cutting a resolution on the floor and getting it on the agenda because we're now at the spot to approve the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're talking about cutting two new deals here and getting it on the agenda and then approving it. So, we would literally, we would at some point pause deliberation, and then we would go into actual, the voting process on those two items.
And you're talking about that tonight or pursuing it to-
That's what is being proposed. That's what is being proposed.
It is proposed for tonight, not, not kicking the can down the road more.
Councilwoman Quayle, if I understand you correctly, you're talking about adding that resolution to this agenda to ask for an AG opinion tonight.
Yeah, based on what the Alabama League of Municipalities recommended.
I understand your position. And then, as far as-
That's why I'm doing it.
Councilwoman Wilson is talking about cutting this ordinance and placing it on the agenda tonight.
Very good.
That, that is correct. After our deliberation in the water committee. That is correct.
So, then I'm going to ask a question of our legal department, and then I have a comment on the dollar amounts. Okay, so I apologize for maybe going a little hickledy-pickled here around the, around the curve, but I think I'll get everything answered. So, Ms. April, can we get the AG's opinion subsequent to go ahead and voting on this, so that if we did have a lawsuit, yes, we've got an AG's opinion that either helps us, or if it doesn't help us, then by nature it hurts us. But do we, do we have to have an AG's opinion outside of your legal opinion?
No, you don't. But that is always an option on, on any matter to get an AG's opinion. So, but we feel, I feel, in actually looking at this two paragraph act, that, you know, there is no confusion. So, because as the act reads, the act applies to Jefferson, Jefferson County mayors who are full-time superintendents of, you know, you know, city water boards. And actually, Mayor, Mayor Stewart is, is not a, a, a full-time superintendent. And so, that is very, very clear. And it's, it's very similar to, you know, if you're looking at city, city code sites, you know, there are some sites that apply and there are some sites that don't. And in, in my opinion, this is an actual act that just does not apply because we do not have a full-time water superintendent.
Thank you. All right. So, then I would, I would move to maybe adjust the, the dollar amount. And, and I hate to, you know, be a bearer of bad news, but I'm thinking somewhere around 22,000 to 24,000. And then if we wanted to add an expense account to it, that, that would be a more realistic thing because a couple of our citizens did bring forth that, you know, how, how many people have had their salary tripled. Now, I realize that if we take back, if we go back 25 years and factor in a 2% to 3% increase over 25 years, we're probably well going to exceed the 30,000 that Councilman Wilson's talking about. But is it fair to the citizens to just because that's the case, jump to that? I, I do believe, and most of the constituents that have responded, and I'll say that, and I please want to state this now, if you're in District Four, please contact me about things and let me know what your opinions are on them. I'm open to take your calls, texts, or emails anytime. I'll respond. I'll give you my opinion, but I will vote the way the preponderance of the individuals represent that they want me to vote. Because that's what I'm elected to do. Not my conscience, not my opinion. I'll give you my opinion, but I'm going to vote the way you share it. At this point in time, my respondents weigh more toward an increase. Most of them have not really given me an amount of an increase, but it's said that as long as they felt it was fair. And there we go with a subjective thing. Everybody says what's fair. So, with that said, I'm putting that dollar amount there for you, somewhere between 22,000 to 24,000. If we have to negotiate an expense account, I believe that was in part of the documents that you sent us, April, that an expense account could be attached in there?
Correct.
All right. And as far as the AG's opinion, I never think that's a bad idea. I just don't like kicking the can down the road. If our citizens have expressed what their desire are, why do we kick it down the road? We've got a legal person here. Why do we need somebody else more legal? If we're going to get a lawsuit, if somebody's going to sue you, they're going to sue you, and you're going to have to fight it anyway. That's my, that's my discussion.
Can I just clarify something?
One moment. There's been an additional piece put on the floor.
Okay.
That Councilman Wilson hasn't had a chance to respond to.
That's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll defer to-
Councilwoman Quayle?
What, what the Alabama League of Municipalities legal team sent me, it says the mayor of any municipality in Jefferson County. It's not just the mayor in Birmingham, but it is any municipality in Jefferson County. And this is why they recommended getting an Attorney General's opinion.
But I think the follow-up statement was that is full-time.
Full-time.
I could read this.
Please.
It says, "The mayor of any municipality in Jefferson County who is employed full-time by a municipality, municipal board, or municipal corporation to serve as superintendent of a municipal light and power system, municipal water system, municipal sewer system, and a municipal gas, gas system owned and operated by such municipality." And then it goes further, "shall be paid for his service as superintendent of such systems in addition to the salary he now receives as mayor. Such sum as the, the governing body shall deem reasonable, but not to exceed $1,200 per month." And so, while I agree that it would be applicable to mayors of cities in Jefferson County who are employed full-time, I disagree with the league that it applies to all mayors in Jefferson County, because that's not what the act says.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Legal. So, we've got, Councilwoman Wilson?
Yeah, just, just, I, I just want to make a, make a point of clarification. You know, this, this particular amount, I, I just didn't pull it out of the air before it gets on Facebook and social media, okay? So, I, I just want to make that clear. This, this, this amount, well, let me first start off where we have not changed this particular salary in 20 years, okay? Based on our performance evaluation Jared just mentioned to us, in the, in the years, we have been nominated and recognized, Ms. Miles even said it, as one of the leading water systems in Jefferson County. And I'm going to just cut it right there. What $30,000 came from is the average salary, full-time salary of a water superintendent is $60,000. That's on zippia.com. That's a pay scale website where you can go in and look at. If you're on social media, I know I'm, I'm going to get this information back through social media, through Facebook comments or whatever, but I really don't care. But go to Zippia. That's one of the pay scale websites. They said the average salary for a water superintendent in Alabama is $60,000. That's for full-time. So, I just didn't pull $30,000 out of the air, okay? So, I did some homework. Even trustful water superintendent makes 74,000, a little bit over $74,000 a year. So, you can go back and check, but that's where the $30,000 come from. So, it just wasn't thrown out there. I thought as, 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 as a, as a elected official, like I said earlier, Mayor Stewart, he don't know anything about this. I haven't had any conversations with him. But I wanted to get the opinion of the council because my, my vote and my recommendation does not stand alone. We all are part of this. So, if I hear $24,000, I'm going to get off my soapbox, I hear 24,000, and we can discuss that. I threw out 30,000 because that's, that's the homework that I did, okay? So, we have 24,000, we have 30,000. I don't know how else, how you want to continue.
Gotcha.
But however, whatever the council decides, I'm, I'm for it.
And, and, and just where I feel, I, I am open to considering it tonight. I just would prefer to see it written. I don't want it, I don't want it to fall into the kick the can thing. I would just prefer to see it written.
And I will get without city attorney, and we can write it up tonight.
Okay.
So, it can be, be both.
And, Councilman, go ahead.
One second, Councilwoman.
Legal?
One second, Councilwoman. Legal, please.
Okay. It will look exactly like the current ordinance.
Okay.
Except it will just have a changed figure.
Okay.
I do not, I do not recommend any change in the wording to that.
Okay.
It will just be a different, different figure.
Fair enough. So, that being said, we have two proposals on the floor. Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes. And just for clarity's sake, when we talk about water superintendents and we start talking about dollar amounts, what our people, our residents need to understand is that there are water superintendents who play the role of Jared, who are both supervisor and superintendents. And that's why they get the salaries that they get. In this act, we're talking about someone who functions as a mayor, but also functions as a water superintendent. And this is why we have this act, and this is why I'm asking that we do, do err on the side of prudence here and get an Attorney General's opinion that can let us know what we can and what we can't do.
Understood. That being said, so we've already discussed two items of old business. We've got two items of new business proposed. So, before we add these, and this is something I want to also get back when I, when I talk about refining our procedures, we do have, I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent. We've, 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 we've done things in the past where we have added things on, cut, cut stuff. Sometimes it was, it was necessary. Like the, the toll for Siesta Motel, that wasn't necessary. We had to cut that on the floor. But typically, there is a deadline as far as when items of business are supposed to make it to us before the agenda is, is approved. So, I just want to make sure that we're not setting a dangerous precedent, and we do our absolute best to stick to those guidelines going, going forward. That being said, I'm willing to accept a roll call as far as getting these two items on the agenda. Councilman London, what say you to the both items?
Well, just comment, comment, never disrespect Councilman Box. My, my District One gave me the figure of 36,000.
Okay.
So, but I'm, I'm negotiable.
Yes.
Because we, I know, we're working, trying to work and do the right thing.
Yes, sir. I agree.
And so, so I do agree with the 30,000, because that's what my, my District One told me, 36. So, I am good for 30, 30,000 if the council is good with that.
Okay. So, you're open to that first ordinance?
Yes, I am open.
New business being added. How do you feel about the, how do you feel about the resolution that Councilwoman Quayle is adding?
Well, it's, it's clear to me. I mean, we already have the answer, which she just read. I'm, I'm looking at it. Our mayor is not full-time mayor.
Sure.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't talk about him. It's about full-time mayor. Our mayor is a part-time mayor. So, I don't need AG opinion when I have my attorney sitting to my left right here with her opinion. And that's why we hire her to do what she does.
Understood.
I don't need AG opinion.
I've got a question for you, Legal, but it looks like you have something to say.
The way that this act reads, it is a part-time water superintendent, so not a, a part-time, part-time mayor.
Part-time mayor superintendent, yeah.
But is a, but is a part-time water superintendent.
Sorry.
And a follow-up question for you. Say we move on this new ordinance, but we also decide to move on the resolution. Is there, we can technically do both, correct?
You could.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, thoughts on the ordinance? Councilman London, you're good. Thoughts on the resolution? You see no need?
No need.
So, that is a, all right. And then, Councilwoman Quayle, what do you say specifically regarding the ordinance and adding it to the agenda?
No.
Okay. As far as the resolution goes?
I'd like us to take that route first.
Okay. Councilman Box, what do you say about the ordinance being added?
I think that we should go ahead and add the ordinance to the, to the agenda.
Okay. And in regards to the resolution?
All right. And with the resolution, you're talking about adding this, or you're talking about Councilwoman Quayle's?
Well, the ordinance would be the pay increase for the superintendent. The resolution would be the AG opinion.
I think we could move with the, with the AG's opinion as well, if that would make the citizens and the council feel better. But we can go ahead and pass it and then get an AG's opinion.
Fair enough. And then, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wilson, what do you say about the ordinance? You obviously introduced it, so I'm assuming you're in favor of putting it to the agenda?
That's correct. I introduced the ordinance. Also, just based on Council Quayle's position as a council member, I do respect that. I, I don't mind putting the resolution on the agenda and voting it up and down. What I would like to know is, if we vote on the resolution, does that hinder or stop the ordinance from going into effect? Of course, it has to go through the readings or whatever, but even if we ask for AG opinion, that's all that we're doing. That's all the resolution is. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a bit of an unconventional approach because generally, you will ask for an opinion and then you will do it, you know, versus doing it and then asking. But, you know, it, it's certainly something that can be done. The ordinance will take two readings unless the rules are suspended, and it will go into effect in accordance with its own terms, which is generally after, after publication.
Okay. So, is, out of respect for the position, Council Quayle, yeah, we can just vote it up or down. I, I do think we need to put it on there.
So, add the ordinance and the resolution?
Yes.
And I myself, I am good with adding the ordinance, since it's been explained to us there's no change except for the salary. And I'm perfectly fine asking for the AG opinion as well, just to make everybody sleep well at night. All right. So, that is-
I, I said put it on the agenda. I didn't say vote it forward.
Well, I'm sorry. I meant to say vote on it. I apologize. Yes, thank you very much. So, we've got-
Councilman Spivey?
Yes, sir.
It should be noticed, noted that an AG's opinion does not carry the force of law. It does not protect from lawsuits. It is merely an opinion on what the AG thinks.
No, I understand. I appreciate that. Thank you. But I, I recognize your firm's input on the matter concerning the ordinance, and I appreciate it. So, we are basically-
Councilman Spivey, can, can I just add to that?
Briefly.
If there is a lawsuit, that AG opinion would be introduced before the courts, would it not?
We would certainly put it in, you know, but it won't, the court may find differently. There are plenty of actual cases where a court finds differently than an, an AG's opinion. So.
But it would be one that we could introduce.
We would definitely do that.
Good. Thank you.
And, Council President Spivey, I just wanted to make the comment there that I know it's kind of unconditional asking for it as well, because I, I trust your judgment. But once again, we don't know that the opinion might come, might not come back and say we're fine. So, we've actually made progress and then been told the progress we've made was fine. Our legal counsel's already told us it's fine. fine. Our legal council has already told us it's fine. So now we've got more weapons than we could ever have to know that we actually did something right by moving forward.
Absolutely. So that being said, to kind of come to a conclusion on this, we've got for the ordinance, four agree, one disagrees. For the resolution, four agree, and one disagrees. So I'm willing to go ahead and add those items to the agenda. Would we consider them fairly well deliberated and considered?
Yeah, I, I would, but I would want to come back and put an amount on that ordinance, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
I think we were like $6,000 difference.
Okay.
So if we could, we were at 24 and 30. So if we can make it 27, we was like 6,000 off. So if we can make it 27,000?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, I'm, I'm, I know I'm the one who gave the 24 comment, so I'm good with not to exceed 30,000.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right. Okay.
That seems to be where the, the group is going and the input that we've received, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
I rest my case. Thank you.
Councilman Spivey?
Yes.
I would actually make it an actual figure versus a not-to-exceed figure.
So we would just say 30,000 then?
We would want to set this, this salary.
We'll just say 30,000.
Whatever that is, that the council as well.
Or when it is introduced, then I will, obviously, it needs to be introduced properly. So...
My fault.
That being said, we've got...
That's why we got Legal here to keep us out of trouble.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. So we've talked about our item one and two from old business. We now have ordinance 2021-10 added as number one on new business. And then we've looked at adding item number, item number two of new business, which will be 2021 R-39. With those four items, is someone willing to make a motion and go forward with approving of the agenda as stated with those additions?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with these amendments. Under new business, item number...
2021.
We, right, we don't have any, okay. Under new business, it'll be ordinance number 2021-10 that states we'll make a recommendation to raise the water superintendent's salary to $30,000. And under item number two, under new business, to consider resolution 2021 R-, I'm sorry, Council Quayle, I didn't get that number.
39.
39.
And I, Councilman Wilson, can you, can you introduce the agenda with the old business first?
Okay.
With the new business?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I'll go back and make my approval of the agenda. So I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended under old business to remain the same under the ordinance number 2021-09. Under new business, I would like to consider...
Old business number two.
I'm sorry.
Number two.
Oh, and number two. I'm sorry. It's on back and forth.
I know.
Under item number two, to approve, well, to keep the resolution 2021 R-38. Under new business, I would like to amend and add ordinance number 2021-10. That would read to make a recommendation to raise the water superintendent's salary to $30,000 annually. And under item number two, under new business, I would like to amend it to state, approve, consider resolution 2021 R-39 to ask for an AG's opinion on the water superintendent's salary.
We have an agenda on the floor. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect. All right. That being said, we found ourselves at old business. Item number one, would somebody be willing to take us through the process?
Do we have public comments on agenda?
We forgot public comments first.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I apologize. Now that we have an approved agenda, public comments on the approved agenda, please. Two minutes coming up. Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Kim Hartley. I reside at 2304 Fourth Avenue South. And my question is on adding the ordinance to raise the superintendent's salary. I'd like to know if that will increase the rate payer's rate in any way?
There's been no rate increase proposed by either the superintendent or the department head.
So these are just excess funds that we have that we can use for, for salary rather than whatever else we have in mind?
Those funds will come out of the water department's general budget.
Okay.
And that is a separate budget, and at this time, our revenues does exceed our expenditures.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And just for, just for the record, we have not approved the water budget. We're still on the 2020 water budget. We're still operating on the 2020 water budget. Just for clarification.
Okay.
All right.
Any other comments around agenda items only? All right. Is it on here?
It's not on there.
Okay, gotcha.
It's in the drawer.
Okay. Chief McDaniel with a comment.
This is from Paul Tierney, 2205 Third Avenue North. As a general rule, the National Society of Human Resource Management recommends that employers should examine the overall salary structure of its personnel at least every three to five years. I understand that the water superintendent pay has not changed in approximately 20 years, so the current review is well within national best practices, and any effort to evade or delay this review seems unfortunately political in nature. The city should ensure that pay is structured and competitive with the market so that they can attract and retain the best talent, and that includes our elected officials, current and future. I hope this board will make its recommendations not on the current political winds, but based on what is necessary to keep our award-winning water service ahead of the curve and significant point of pride in our growing city. That's the end. I strongly support a pay raise for the water superintendent.
Thank you. Good comment.
And I want to do something I don't normally do. I don't normally get the opportunity to speak as a citizen, but I am a citizen here. 3562 Ratliff Road. I just want to know, you know, I get asked questions when I have things. How many of you went outside of the city of Irondale to get an opinion on this? Because we're listening, and I hear citizens. I'm a citizen of Irondale. I don't pay water, so I shouldn't necessarily have as much of a vote as someone like the VA. The new VA being, being built in Birmingham is Irondale Water. They're paying. It's their money. It's not my money, because I don't pay Irondale Water. So that's something else you guys need to think about.
Thank you, sir. Chief, what district are you in, please?
I am in District Four.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other comments around agenda items only? All right. Thank you. That being said, we'll close for public comments, and we'll move on into the agenda. If someone could take us through the first item of old business?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020, ordinance number 2021-09 that grants a serial franchise agreement to Phoenix Water Resources.
Do you need all three steps?
I have it.
You have it on it? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. Do we need a second? I mean, do we, can we get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-09 be suspended, and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call. Councilman London?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I make a motion that ordinance number 2021-09 be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
We have a motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second. Everybody in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. That motion passes. All right. If someone could go ahead and move on old business, item number two?
I make a motion that resolution 2021-R-38 be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. All right. Now time for new business, item number one. If someone could take us through that ordinance?
Yeah, I make a motion that ordinance number 2021-10 be considered read.
Do we have a second?
Second. Can you get a second, John?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-10 be suspended, and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call. Councilman London?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayle?
No.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And then the council, myself, would be a yes.
It'll have to come back.
It'll have to come back in two weeks.
Yep.
Thank you. And finally, item number four. If someone could move that motion, please?
Item number what now?
I make a motion that resolution 20 dash, 2021-R-39 requesting that the city attorney request an AG opinion in regard to raising the water superintendent's salary.
One moment.
I just wanted to make sure, was that item number, was that item number four or item number two under new business?
It was, it's the fourth item, but yes, for point of clarity, it is the second item under new business.
Okay.
Sorry, when I was writing them down, I went one, two, three, four. So, yeah, that was my fault. So, yeah, item number two under new business. Councilwoman Quayle has introduced it. Do we have a second?
Um, one second.
Yes.
What I need is, I need an exact statement of what I need to ask the AG's office. So if, if you could give me an exact statement, that's what I'm going to need in the record as to the authority to ask a certain question.
Can we do that? Can y'all get together after this meeting, or does this need to be said now?
Needed in the resolution.
Okay. Councilwoman Quayle, please deliver.
Yes. That resolution 2021-R-39 requesting that the city attorney request an AG opinion in regard to raising the water superintendent's salary, who is employed as a part-time employee and is serving as mayor. If that could be done, and secondly, how much could we raise that salary?
Thank you.
All right. So Legal has the description of the ask, the items on the floor, and did I hear a second on that?
Yes.
Can we get a roll call vote, Council President?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Councilman London?
Oh.
Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
No.
And I will vote yes, so the motion passes. All right. We come to the end of our agenda. I would ask for any public comments on non-agenda items. I see, I saw Ms. Donna, I saw your hand first, so please. I've learned to not let you go last. Thank you. You've got two minutes.
Thank you so much. I wanted, I don't know who to thank. I don't know who to give kudos to, but a terrible house was torn down on our street. I don't know if the abatement board did it, but, and I don't know who tore it down, but they did a beautiful job, and if they're hired by the city, they get an A-plus from me. And it was 321 East Ventura Drive.
Marcus, does that ring a bell to you?
No.
Okay, gotcha.
So maybe it was the investor or someone.
But thank you. I'm glad there's been an improvement.
But anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Outstanding. All right. Any other comments from non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am. Young lady in yellow.
Good evening. I'm Tori Spearman, 2308 Second Avenue South. I am here related to, I need an update related to the abatement at 2305 First Avenue South. I was told that it would be on the agenda today, so imagine my disappointment when it was not. So where do we stand, and where are we going, and when are we gonna get there?
Sure. I would defer to Legal on where we're at on that process. That's the Stanley property?
Yes, that is, is, is still going forward. I would, I would actually have to defer to the fire marshal on that, who has been out sick since Tuesday. And so we, I would expect that it would be on the, the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I look forward to discussing it at that time.
Outstanding. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Simple, but I'm not sure. Okay, I'm in 313 Grant Mill Drive. The road that goes around, old Grant Mill Road, it comes around from McDonald's to Abington. There are two areas of wash. And I know, I understand, last couple of days, we did receive a lot of rain. But even when there are smaller rains, there's construction at the new, what will now be a new church site, and there's wash there. And I wish that Ross was still here, but he's left, because he has a place there close by. There's wash there, and it's the big gravel, the big gray gravel washes into the road. They now, I'm not sure if it was there before yesterday, or if they've just done it. They've got the black stuff there, but it's not, it's not sufficient. Then also in between Grant Mill Drive and Abington, there's major wash there. I've even had to call the fire department before, and they had to upright the fire hydrant there. So it's an ongoing problem ever since they cleared that land that's actually behind my house, my house in Abington. And so I need to know that someone is going to address that, because yesterday, there was, I mean, the whole road was covered with water. There's mud in the road. And like I said, it's not just the major rains, it's every time it rains. It's, you know, there's something in the roadway.
What I would ask you to do is to please get with the city clerk, so that he can get with the mayor, and then the mayor can direct the building inspector to make sure that any environmental mitigation is properly installed.
I wrote down exactly how my piece of paper is. That sufficient?
Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments on non-agenda items? I see no hands. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Have a fantastic evening.
That was a lot.
Depends on how soon she gets it. Usually, you know, either at 3:00 or 6:00.
Yes, sir.
I want to make one of the practices that allies, your councilmen, I would like to put on the agenda. Out of respect, because we're all readers, I feel it's a business only thing that is put on there.
As you, okay.
I mean, you know, every, every...
Yes, yes. No, I, I understand, and then, then we can vote on it.
Then we can vote on it.
Okay, so I'm...